Okay, great. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm calling the Southborough School Committee meeting to order at 6:33 PM. We have one member online this evening and the other four are present. This is the first of two meetings that we will be conducting this evening. So, once we're done with our joint meeting, we will adjourn and then open our second meeting following that. And typically, we don't do hybrid or Zoom meetings in this room. Just it's not as acoustically sound as public safety or the townhouse. So, this portion of the meeting will be the only portion that is hybrid. So, I'll let select board call their meeting to order.
And I'm calling to order the November 12th meeting of the Southborough Select Board at 6:34 PM.
Great, thank you. And Capitol posted as well. I don't think that you have a quorum though, Jason. And we have two members of advisory here. Andrew Pfaff is online and Marcy Jones is here.
Safe, please, Eric.
Oh, okay, and Eric's in the back. But that's not a quorum, so, okay. So, welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming together this evening. So, before I turn it over to Superintendent Martino, we requested that we have a joint meeting to figure out the next steps after the failed NEARI vote in the spring. And we thought it would, this would be good timing for us to come together to discuss kind of where all the boards and committees are as we move forward with this process. With that, I'll turn it over to Greg.
All right, thank you. And also, just want to thank the boards and committees for gathering on an off-night meeting. I know there's plenty of night commitments and appreciate your time. So, for this evening, we thought we would provide some structure for the conversation. And the first question really talks about, you know, is there agreement around what we're trying to solve for? And really, are we trying to determine the level of investment in the town school infrastructure that best supports current and future educational goals in a cost-effective, efficient, and fiscally responsible manner? Not tonight, but over a period of the next few months, in the next year, really trying to determine what this type of project looks like. I thought we could start just by, is there agreement around this?
Well, I can just say, from my perspective, I mean, I went back and looked at the report of the roof, the condition of the roof of NEARI. And I know that's not highlighted here, but in my mind, that seems to kind of force some of the consideration of some of the issues that, you know, were, we've already been discussing for some time.
So, I would say the answer is yes.
I agree that NEARI is not going to be, something needs to be done with NEARI and we need to decide what to do with it. And a lot of other buildings in town depend on those decisions. So, I think it's a good idea to start right now to make next steps.
I agree with Margarita, you know. We need sort of an integrated plan. You know, it looks like we're kind of going back and forth between three schools and four schools, where if we do three schools, the principal construction would be done on the FIN site. And if we do four schools, we have significant overcapacity because that system was designed for 18, 1900 students. I think it's important to recognize when we start thinking about this, that there's sort of a hidden cost in maintaining a school. And it's on the order of $1 to $2 million a year. If you were going to set up a fund to, a school replacement slash major renovation fund, you would put $1 to $2 million a year into that. And so, there are some substantial advantages to going to a three-school system versus a four-school system. But regardless of how we do that, I think we need a plan in totality that not only addresses the schools, but the other major capital plans that we have, so that we can figure out what, as a community, we can reasonably afford. I think we've tried it the other way. And I think, you know, if we come up with a number that we can reasonably afford for this versus some of the other competing needs that we have, you know, we were talking about a major roofs program. And then the other thing we need to do is we need to understand, depending on whether we go with three schools or four schools, what we do with the other assets in town. Because those also carry their own substantial costs. So, you know, if we go to a three-school plan, what do we do with NEARI? What do we do with some of our other buildings? Because frankly, at that point, we have too much space if we do that. So, we need to have, I think, the integrated plan. Yes, there's a short-term need to deal with the roof at NEARI. Looks like we are going to have a lot of choice other than, you know, figuring out the most cost-effective way to do it. But we need an assessment of what the community can afford for each of these things. And then we need a picture for how, what we're going to do with all of the buildings in town. And frankly, I think if we, particularly if we go to a three-school system, you know, we may want to dispose, sell off some of those properties to help fund the very substantial investment that we're going to have to make. So, that's my two cents.
So, guiding questions for this evening. So, you came up with five. There are many more, I'm sure. So, this is obviously an open meeting. But I think first, talking about what options does a school committee support? Talking about the most recent enrollment trends through 2035 through 36? Giving an overview of the capital needs of the pre-K through eight school facilities as it stands today, what we know today? And then talk about what are the paths forward that the citizens can support? And then lastly, leave with, you know, what are the short-term actions? What are the next steps to continue the dialogue and discussion? So, in terms of what options does a school committee support? So, there are four options. It was very helpful to have the pre-K through eight building committee do its work. So, the four options, the first one is NEARI fully renovated to serve grades four and five. FIN expanded and renovated to serve five grades, pre-K through three. And then Woodward, grades four and five. Supported a new four-grade school, which was the failed vote on the NEARI campus. And then could support a new pre-K through five school consolidating to one elementary school. And all options that the school committee supported meet educational programming goals identified in the district's educational plan. And I'm not sure if the school committee has anything else to add.
And just, this did not take into any site considerations. It was just purely on the educational programming that we could get behind, so.
Next is, you know, overview of enrollment trends. So, a question around how accurate has NESF been in projecting enrollment trends? So, we did spend some time looking at the 2011, 12 NESF enrollment projections. And we took those enrollment projections as a baseline and for the 10 years it projected. And then we looked at actuals and compared how accurate NESF was in terms of projecting 10 years out. So, in the far right column, where it says NESF difference, overall, NESF was fairly accurate in projecting enrollment over that 10-year period. If you averaged all those percentages, it would be like 0.36%. So, the most recent NESF enrollment projection that we received was this fall, 25, 26. And it projected enrollment through 35 through 36. NESF is projecting a K increase from that timeframe of a 22%. We also looked at RLS, which was our second demographer who the town hired to do a demographic report, is anticipating a 14% increase in enrollment from that timeframe as well. So, again, looking at projections of NESF to actuals for the period of 2011 to 2012 to 24, 25, those are fairly accurate. And therefore, one could assume that enrollment projections moving forward could be accurate in terms of what it's projected.
So, Greg, can I ask a quick question on where we, so, right now, we've got 1214 is the current enrollment. So, you're already 1226 more than what they projected, or at least what NESF projected? So, have you shown that to them to see if they would change the next nine years?
Yeah, so I think they did have our current data. We're making these projections for 25, 26.
Because RLS is already, for the next three years, already less than what you have right now. So, okay.
So, there's a big difference between enrollment projections near term, out to say five years, and when you start going from five to 25. The big difference is that we actually have a pretty good handle on that because we have a town census. And you can go to the town clerk, in fact, I'm doing that right now, and say, you know, how many, how many are one-year-olds and two-year-olds and three-year-olds and four-year-olds that there are in the town? And that can give you a pretty fair estimate of what's going on. Once you get beyond that point, now you're, you're into more difficult projections or more challenging projections. Those, I looked at one of the studies that was done recently, who made, and that projection was based on female fertility rates, that's how it's done, that were 50% higher than the state average. I won't go any further than that, but I think this requires a lot more careful analysis. There are risks to this. You know, if we were to build 40Bs, that could have an impact. And the other impact, which I haven't seen anybody talk about recently, is sort of baby boom turnover, which folks like myself, I live in a four-bedroom house with me and my wife. And at some point, we will sell it and I guarantee you that there'll be kids in that house. And so, I don't have a good handle yet on, on, on that particular risk. But I'm going to try and wrap my arms around that.
The two demographers know that also, so I agree with Al that the further out you get, the more risky it is. But the lesson that we thought we learned from what they told us back in '21 was that you've got to build a cushion on. You can't build to exactly 1485 because it can swing both ways. But they were very clear about the risk in the outer years as far as what, and there's also migration patterns that they put into that too, besides just the fertility rate. So, it's true that the further out you get, the more unreliable the numbers are. But you got to do, you've got to use something to try to predict it.
So, obviously, enrollment is a very important data point in terms of talking about what solutions, what potential solutions serve the community well. So, the other question is, what are the capital needs of the pre-K through eight school facilities?
Can I ask you a quick question regarding, I guess it's a comment? I, we're never going to, I think, just as, as was just said, right? There's always going to be inherent risk as you get further out with projections. And the projections are what they are. I think that if that becomes a supporting point for whatever, whatever option we go with, that we just provide the qualitative assumptions around what, why, you know, we're showing basically a trend upwards or at the rate that we are. So, whenever we can just have, you know, the three bullet points that support that numbers are, eventually, it's going to need to be part of a narrative that supports our recommendation. So, if we're thinking about eventually helping create a story that the rest of the town can kind of understand, I think that's another piece that we also need to add to that.
Buster?
Can you go back to that projection screen, please? Just so I understand something. So, the projections from the 10 years, from, or 12 years, whatever it is, 2012 to 2025, that NESF put together, and those were done, those are the projections they did 10 years before, right?
Correct. So, they did not have, did not have any data.
So, they predict, they projected out 10 years. And if you take a look at what actually happened, they're pretty close. That doesn't guarantee that the next 10 years is going to be pretty close. But, you know, I think that's strong evidence. So, I don't know, you think, you think going to the town clerk and finding out about, is more sensible than thinking that these projections are going to be pretty close?
They've done the same thing, though. They've gone to the town clerk and gotten the same records. But I will say, if these had been right in 2000, 1999, we wouldn't have built what we built, right? So, that's why you got to be careful with these, no matter what you do, and make sure you don't think that's exactly going to be the number of kids you're going to have in those schools.
You know, I understand that, I understand that. But it seems like that they did a pretty good job, right?
Pretty close.
And there's no reason to necessarily think that this best, because it's always a guess, right? I mean, it's a, it's a guess based on, you know, based on the best data that people can put together. So, there's no particular reason to guess that they're going to be wrong for the next 10 years. Other things can happen, 40Bs, okay, that can always happen. But I'm trying to determine if there's, you know, if there's a goal here to say, well, these projections aren't any good, so we should do our own projections in a different way, or if, or if there's something else going on here, Al.
So, this morning, I spent a couple of hours, I looked at two different population forecasts for the town of Southborough.
Yep.
And then one was MCAD and the other one was the Donahue Institute at UMass. And they differed substantially. And if you then take the forecast of the age cohorts for Worcester County, and they're not that different from Middlesex County, you end up with either a forecast of flat enrollment, or you end up with about 200 and some odd more kids than we have today. And one thing that I think is worth thinking about is preserving flexibility. We might, and I'm, this is one of my many bad ideas, we might consider, if we did the FIN program, leaving a place where we could add some number of classrooms. What I think is important is that whatever we do, we maintain classroom flexibility so that a classroom that is grade three this year might be grade two next year. And so, you know, if 10 years from now, we find out we need four or five more classrooms in, in a FIN, we could conceivably build them when we need them, as opposed to building them now and, you know, hoping that they, that the kids come. So, that's at least an option that ought to be thought about. My observation is that both Trotiere and Woodward have ample capacity regardless of where these forecasts are. I could easily be wrong with that.
So, Al, are you saying that if, say, for instance, FIN got an addition and took a certain number of children, when the malfunctioning part of FIN reaches the end of its life, you could demolish that and build bigger there? And it would be hard?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I wouldn't be advocating demolishing FIN. I think if we take care of it, it can have a very, very long life.
Well, just all it knows is we need flexibility. So, I agree with that. But in the NEARI building committee did build a flexibility into the project that was proposed, with the NEARI site being very conducive to adding on if you had to down the road. That was one of the things that we liked about that site. More conducive there than there was at FIN, for sure, as far as the land that goes there. So, I agree, you just, again, go back to what we built in 2000, look where we are today. So, things changed. 40Bs, so anytime you, these demographers will not include any project into what they're looking at unless it's been permitted. So, we can talk about 40Bs, but they have to be permitted before they're actually, put them into the computation.
So, I think enrollment's an important piece. I think when, you know, we look at the NEARI building committee in part with MSBA, MSBA does its, has its own demographic arm, has its own calculations. But in terms of what the school committee relies on in terms of demographics, primarily has been NESF over the period of time. With the recent addition of RLS, I'd welcome any other analysis, Al, that you can bring to light as well. So, the next question are, is what are the capital needs of the pre-K through eight school facilities? So, we do have capital plans. Southborough's capital plan actually is going to be reviewed and potentially voted on this evening. It's through FY '27 through FY '36. And the Northborough/Southborough Regional School District has a capital plan that is a little bit shorter in terms of a window, it's '27 through '32. So, in our capital forecast, our projections through '36, we're anticipating a $14 million investment. Investments that we're forecasting are primarily roofs, you know, HVAC, and potentially windows or indoors. So, Woodward, we're anticipating a little over 13.5 million. We had in the capital plan, NEARI renovation, that's 45.5 million. That was directly from the work of the NEARI building committee and estimates from the designers. And then Trotiere is 28, a little over $28 million. Projected through FY '32 at Aldonquin, the total investment is a little over 8.5 million. And that is not apportioned out by, you know, the community of Northborough and Southborough. That is accurate. And Northborough's portion, or Southborough's portion is typically around 39% of that number. We anticipate the useful lifespan of a building is about 60 years. And that is with capital projects and maintenance of that building over that period of time. So, in terms of a full renovation, if, if we do pay attention to roofs, HVAC, doors and windows, we believe that the lifespan is 2060. Woodward was constructed in 2004, so it'd be 2064. NEARI, we believe, is immediate. There are urgent needs that need to be addressed in many aspects of the current facility. This is where the sense of urgency comes into place. And then Trotiere, 2064. And if you think about the last significant wave of projects the town of Southborough constructed within the early 2000s, and one end result is, you know, they'll come to end of life at a similar timeframe. Aldonquin, we anticipate 2068, again, given a 60-year lifespan. So, this is important in terms of thinking about the fleet of schools, their needs, and where they fit into a larger town capital plan, one that, you know, is scheduled and really thinks about your future years.
So, Greg, can I ask about this one for a second? FIN 2060, when I was on the community center exploratory committee a couple of years ago, FIN was brought up as a potential option for a community center because it was deemed as next after NEARI to need major work. And at that time, it was set 10 to 15 years. So, this differs greatly from what that conversation was, which was less than about three or four years ago. So, what has sort of shifted to change in that three or four years that have such a wide extension of time for the building?
So, roofs, windows, HVAC, with those investments, we believe the building, you know, could serve for another, for the useful life of those investments.
And the hallways, educational vision, other aspects of the building, lighting, fire suppression, all the other infrastructure needs would be?
They're currently?
They're current, they're up to current codes. But they wouldn't need to have any major investments, the same way that NEARI sort of deviated.
Correct. NEARI's at this, NEARI's at the end of them.
Yeah.
It's at that 60-year window without a lot of capital investments.
But to Tim's point, FIN is a hybrid building, right? Old and new, 2000 and then the 66. So, you're saying the whole thing, even given that, the full renovation would be 2060 with everything that's been done? Okay.
And what about anything else, like site-wise? I know there's mentioned before about like water mitigation efforts and things like that. Is that $14 million inclusive of all, all that effort and anything that would need to be done to mitigate and manage and prolong the building from mold and other issues?
Yeah, the primary, I mean, obviously, there's some site work that will be required. I'm not going to speak to that here.
Okay. Yeah, so the site work that you're referencing is, and one of the corners of, of the FIN school has definitely sunk into the ground. So, that would be something that had to be looked at. When we first had the mold mitigation efforts a couple of years ago, we did have an engineer come out and evaluate that. And it would need some pretty significant infrastructure there to, you know, get the water to move away from the building versus seeping underneath. So, that was, that is not necessarily part of the $14 million, but what was part of that conversation a couple of years ago?
Okay, so, but has it been done since that conversation?
It is not.
So, it needs investment on top of the $14 million?
For that particular piece, yeah.
Oh, for that piece. And do we have an idea of range of cost on that?
We did not.
Millions, or is it in the hundreds of thousands?
If I were to guess based on what the engineer was referencing at the time, it would be hundreds of thousands, not millions.
Okay.
So, really, the next set of questions.
Sorry, one more, Greg, on this topic. What about other types of things, like HVAC systems for mini splits and all that sort of thing? Would Woodward benefit from any of those programs between now and 2064 that we would want to?
Yeah, so the, so the through '36, the investment of the 13.6 million is really about HVAC heating and cooling, roofs, and any doors and windows that need to be corrected.
So, like life improvements, like adding AC into the window units and stuff like that, that's all part of that number?
But some of these are, I mean, it's hard to predict something that's going to be eight years out, right? And the actual cost of what that's going to be. So, these are just all placeholders and estimates. Obviously, when we actually go to do it, that doesn't mean it's going to be the actual number that we had projected, but, because it's hard to go out 10 years, but at least they're, they're listed in there.
Yeah. I just want to make sure, like, a lot of the things that we'd like to do are, are in there and considered. So, we're looking at it holistically, because I know when we, on the pre-K committee, looked at some of these options, we did efforts of touching elements of buildings to be able to do some of those things as well and some of the costs. So, making sure everything's all apples to apples from some of where that left off.
And then the guiding questions continue, you know, what are the paths for that the citizens can support? And then what are the short-term actions? And then, in terms of space, I know there's been a lot of conversation around a belief that we can fit in current spaces, that there's plenty of space at Woodward, or there's plenty of space at, you know, FIN to fit. You know, we spent a lot of time on the pre-K through eight building committee over the summer, examining spaces, what we need, doing calculations, locking rooms, locking spaces. And the outcome that we came to is that if we were to close a building, we would need an addition. And we were to move to Trotiere and move to FIN, both buildings would need additions to meet the educational programming that is expected of, of education in the 21st century. And I'll just share that there is a sense of urgency, that, you know, we spent five years investigating, bringing a solution forward. And I respect the community's belief that that wasn't right for the community. But it doesn't resolve the issue of, there's something, there's something, a sense of urgency in terms of a solution that we need to bring forward and move forward in terms of school facilities. And my job is, is to communicate that sense of urgency and partner with towns and committees to come to a solution. And I guess the next question, what are the short-term actions? What are, what are the next steps to move forward? To me, one of the key questions is, does the part, town partner with MSBA and submit a statement of interest? Do we need to form a school building committee? And I'm not saying that we need to decide all of these this evening, but I think these are key questions that we need to answer. And I'm not saying that we need to decide all of these this evening, but I think these are key questions that we need to answer. You know, I would recommend, on behalf of this school committee, another joint board meeting to start really engaging in these questions more deeply. And then, again, my sense of urgency, you know, at what point do we bring forward to the citizens projects to study further? And then at what point do we bring forward projects or a project for the town to vote beside if that's the right project?
So can we go back to, you know, if you go back to the failed vote, there were different things that caused it to fail. But one of the primary things was the idea that the current, we had enough room to close Neri and do what you just said, put a grade or two at Trotter and put a grade at FIN. We now got the new demographic studies that do show a fairly significant increase, protection, increase in students for the next ten years. I, I think if that doesn't get resolved before we decide to, to do one, two, and three, we end up in the same position and we still don't get it done. So I think the school committee is going to have to speak fairly strongly about what you think at this point. If you bring the work of the K through eight as far as whether that is just, I mean, you control the schools, you control the buildings, whether that is not one that you are going to agree to support or are going to agree to support. And maybe even tonight, so that we kind of know how to answer one, two, and three.
So I don't think that in, in this failed vote, we're going to put kids in Trotter, right? We weren't gonna put...
That's what people, that, that was one of the responses.
One of the reasons that it failed, there was a significant group of citizens, well-meaning citizens, that thought that that was a viable path, that we should use the buildings we have now and not spend any more money on a new school.
No, I meant if, if the new school had gone forward, I don't think we were going to temporarily house kids at...
Oh, no, okay, so they, no, so no, we were going to, you know, one grade at FIN, one grade at Woodward, that's true. But that, that was a significant reason that vote failed. That was the, you know, the group that really believed, honestly believed, that we've got enough room based on the demographics that were in place. And these, we've got different numbers now as far as demographics, but based on them. So I think, I know this is a tough discussion, but, you know, is that one that the school committee is going to vote to not support? So it's just not on the table for what the three, two or three projects that could be brought forth in a special town meeting?
Right, so...
To look at.
We were, we had updates throughout the pre-K to eight committee, because Greg and Laura presented, and Stephanie presented the subcommittee for the educational vision portion of the pre-K to eight subcommittee. And throughout that process, I think it proved out that we would not be able to run the programming that we would expect to do at a middle school. So the school committee did not support moving fifth grade to Trotter as it stands in, if that answers your question. So we, we, we took a position to not support moving fifth grade to Trotter.
With all due respect, I don't think anyone paid attention to educational value when they were looking at space. That's just my personal view. They, they took a look at space, oh, yeah, we've got this many square feet, we can put this many classrooms here. But even though there was a lot of work done, you know, a lot of work on educational value, I think there was some done for the K through five committee too, as far as talking about that. I think the educational value got kind of thrown into the ocean as long as there weren't enough. As long as there's some square feet to back kids, it's just a personal view on how that came down. I just want to comment on the first one, since I guess it's up there, MSBA. Rightly or wrongly, we've already decided we don't want the MSBA money. And frankly, if we went through an MSBA process, it would really take too long, you know, to basically deal with things immediately. So I think we have to throw that one out. Again, personal opinion, I think we've got to throw that first one out and say, you know, we got to move quicker than, than, than these guys. We already spent years with these guys to try to come up with the right project, so.
Well, one part of this that hopefully would be well received is that this proposal involves putting different options to the, for a town meeting, for a town meeting to decide. And that was definitely one of the key feedback points that we heard off of the surveys that, that were done post the May vote. I think people felt that they, they wanted to see some options. And without getting into the details of what would be the two or three different options that would be on the table to be possibly funded for just the feasibility and design, you know, you can imagine that one would be like just a simple, I know when it's simple, it's still very expensive, addition or addition renovation of Neri, so that would not change any of the grade configuration. And that has some of the benefits, I think, of, you know, there's still a school at FIN. There's not all of the complicated considerations about what to do with a school that gets taken out of service as a school. And then there's also would be at least one option, which involves, you know, moving some grades. And then if it's a way where the school committee believes that it's viable, it, it meets the educational objectives of the, the school committee well enough that it should be considered, that I view, I'd like to feel optimistic that, you know, we've listened to what the town meeting said in May, and, and one of the ways we've responded is providing additional options. And then really, the ultimate decider here will be town meeting. It'll also, you know, there'll be significance to the fact that the more options you want to study, the more money you need to spend to figure out how much all those things cost. And at certain point, we just need to start narrowing down all of the different options. Right after, after the vote in May, there was a discussion of so many different options, just need to start narrowing down in a way to make progress here.
Well, Andrew, that's why the first four, or ones they voted on as far as four that do meet education requirements. So you may start with those four as far as what could be those two or three.
So my quick points are, does the town partner with MSBA? I don't, I think that's a longer road. There's also, there's no certainty the MSBA would want to partner with us at this point. And forming a school building committee from the select board perspective of, you know, appointing committees, getting the, that takes time. And I don't see that it's necessary to do that before having a vote on this. So that's my initial reaction. And then, I mean, this is kind of ambitious in that, you know, we'd have a significant special town meeting in the early part of next year. But I think if we don't do that, we are just kind of continually just kick the can down the road. And we have hard decisions to make, not just, and it's not going to be made just by these two boards, it's going to be town meeting as well. You know, you can't just keep debating things and debating things and saying no to things. At certain point, the town needs to come together and say yes to something. So I think this is, I think it's providing a path which hopefully gets us closer.
Could we go back to the, the four options that the school committee has said meet their visions? So I guess I'm going to state the, what I consider to be the obvious. Number three, we tried that, it didn't work. I, I, I don't know that anybody wants, well, maybe some people want to bring it back, but I, it failed pretty substantially.
So the reason why it's up there is because it still meets the educational vision of the school committee.
Right.
And part of the reason why the feedback that we got that it failed was because they didn't, couldn't compare it to anything else from a price perspective.
Right.
Also, it, it deals with your saving one to two million dollars a year by having one less school.
So...
Thank you for pointing that out earlier.
You know, the other reason it failed was the price tag.
Understood, but you don't know what the other prices are for the other options, so that's why we kept it on there.
So we concluded that the new four grade school, net, 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 after you took into the present value of the savings from reduced headcount, would cost less than the new two grade school. So that's why a lot of people, that's why the committee supported that. Any of these are going to cost a lot of money. And so we, you know, maybe that's starting to get out, that we really, people understand that this, whatever we do is going to cost a lot of money. It's pretty clear that when you fully renovate something, you actually spend more money than tearing it down and starting all over. Ask Michael Weishen of the Fable Hall, he says, wish I'd torn it down and just built new. So it's just a fact that a renovation is going to cost more, and we've got the numbers to show that. But that still would not disturb the land if you did that. And that's, you know, I don't know if the people who hated the project because the site are, are okay if you don't disturb the land, if you actually just do that versus tear it down and then dig it all over. I don't know if that appeases that group or not. It may not. Probably something to understand. There is a possibility, we looked at a couple of sites that are close to Neri and Trotter, they would still get the camps filled. They, we may need to look at those again. That would take the site thing off the table. That's why tonight, you know, if we don't necessarily pick the, disagree on the process, right? Pick, maybe pick the date or two that we're going to use for a special town meeting, then come back and actually try to hone in on two or three possibilities that we can have costed out and bring back to the town to, to vote on may be the better way to go.
Where are we at on the roof estimate of Neri? I know that there was a study being done, but I don't know where it stands today.
So as of now, what's been prepared is a request for qualifications to go out, to have someone do a complete analysis on that, to get a hard number. We have had reports that have been done, which, you know, shared the failed nature of it, but that's as far as we've gotten so far. So it's in, in progress and we're about to procure that service.
So what's the timeline for getting bids back or close back?
Probably within a couple of months.
Okay, because from what I see right now is we have a roof problem starting. We have a bigger problem within the building, but really, the roof has to get shored up as the first and foremost priority or whatever we decide we're doing. So if we have any immediate votes at a town meeting, that's obviously the thing that we're going to have to think about first. And once the roof is not leaking anymore, then we can talk about the rest of the structure and what the, the rest of the planning could be. At least that's my purview. I think we have more things to do, but option two here, you don't really need to do much more to that building theoretically, aside from buy enough time to finish the renovation. You could apply back to MSBA along the process, get HVAC systems, windows, roofs along the way on smaller grants, which might be, if we take it on ourselves upfront, would be about maybe almost a net neutral cost, awaiting several years for MSBA and do a full reimbursement rate at a thirty one percent effective rate. So we would have some opportunity to start funding it ourselves and apply for things along the way and hope that they come back. So I, I think that we have more to talk about on what the options could be, but I think the roof has to get done regardless of anything else we do.
So one thing, one thing we did learn, we are going through a roof project, partnering with MSBA in Northborough, that similar size, structure, that the roof is tripping other codes, ADA. You know, so if we put a roof on, it is going to require us also invest in ADA compliance. It's the cumulative cost of the improvements then that could trip other code requirements. So I think it's something for us to map out and pay attention to, because I do not believe it's simply putting a roof on. It's putting a roof on and having a clear understanding of what then is required in terms of investment.
Yeah, I know that the roof and windows are exempt, but, you know, you're, you're right about the compliance piece.
But that's not like MSBA, as MSBA says, you're not, you know, you're not exempt from tripping ADA. That is increasing the cost of the project that we're involved in in, in Northborough right now. So it is not, oh, you, you know, you're exempt from implementing ADA. It's, yeah, you're putting the roof on, and as a result, you have to meet all the ADA requirements that meet today's code.
And that's with MSBA reimbursement though, right?
That's with any, any project.
If I remember the number correctly off the top of my head, it was like one point three million dollars escalated in a ver text report on ADA compliance on that building. So it's not necessarily a bad thing to do it, and it's not necessarily, in the grand scheme of the numbers we just looked at, overly expensive to, to also approach that at the same time. If we would keep the building for a different purpose or a school, if we decided the best option is to renovate that building. So I think even if we look at those numbers upfront, and it does trip it today, it's not a poison pill as a negative. I mean, we make the building better while we figure out the rest of what we're doing.
But if you did do, if number two was the one that we ended up doing, and adding on to what Tim's saying, that we just did what we had to do to keep Neri safe while FIN was being worked on, then you wouldn't necessarily be throwing the money away on Neri, because you could then maybe use Neri for the town building we thought we were going to get out of FIN, because we really could use another town building for a variety of things. So that's interesting. I hate throwing away the state money. I hate throwing away that thirty five million dollars. So it would give us a way to get to the MSBA. We think it's a three year project. If you look at Metfield, they got back in line three years later, they had almost the same project we had exactly. So that's interesting.
I guess my point is, and I, you know, I don't disagree with you, Tim, it's just that we need to rely on the expert. We, we need to be careful about making statements if we just do this, that we really need expert guidance to be able to understand what this is and what it's going to cost. And, you know, putting on a new roof, and that's why we're looking to get, you know, proposals to understand what the problem is and how much it's going to cost. I'm not a roof expert. I'm not an ADA expert. And we rely on the experts around us to give us good data. I just would caution us to, to say, oh, well, if we invest four million, that solves that problem for the time being. And it very well may be a ten million problem, but we don't know what, we don't know what the cost is going to be yet for it.
The quote we're getting back, is it for the roof or is it for the project of what the roof plus whatever?
It will be the roof flat, you know.
So it'll be a combination? So we're know at that point, once we get that quote back within a couple of months, of what this looks like in the near term.
Greg, could you speak to the difficulty of getting ADA compliance in Neri? I think the construction is cinder block, right?
Yeah, no, I, I mean, it can be done, I would imagine. I think, you know, other schools are cinder block and, you know, they have to meet code compliance. I don't, I don't know what the, and again, I'm not a construction expert. And that is getting cost estimates around what would it take to make ADA compliant? But yes, there are some doors that we need to be wired in, egresses that need to be addressed, but...
But a lot of those walls are weight bearing, right?
I think beyond my expertise.
But if we get back to what we're trying to do, which is big picture process to go forward, right? Special town may need some time in the spring. We'll have another meeting to pick the projects. You guys will pick the projects that we want to bring forth, you know, the options. I agree with Andrew, the study, the survey said people wanted more than one option. And, and decide, I think the cost of doing three, looking at three different projects, getting all the schematics so you can really cost them out, is probably seven fifty thousand dollars if we use Arle Street. If we don't use Arle Street, it's going to be a little bit more, because Arle Street's got a lot of information they can use. So you're talking, I asked the town for somewhere between seven fifty and probably a million, maybe a million two, to be able to do this. But if tonight, we can just agree that that's a process we think we should do, at this point, to try to determine what the ultimate project is that's going to be brought forth to vote on.
I think what the school committee is trying to do with the roof too, to Tim's point, is we need to know what we're doing long term with these buildings. And our time has passed to figure that out, so we need to now get going on it. And I would hate to bring a roof, get a roof done, and then bring this proposal forward and we end up with renovating Neri, right? And then we just put a new roof on it and, oh, it's not, it's just not a wholesome project and we're not doing it all at the same time. So I think, you know, as, as you know, school committee pulled the, the roof proposal from special town meeting in the fall, so that we gave ourselves more time to figure out what we wanted to. So I think the path forward that Kathy just alluded to is the direction that school committee is looking for. And obviously, we, we can't call any town meetings, but want to get your feedback on that path specifically.
Good question.
Go ahead, Marissa.
Just looking at the data you showed with the increasing number of students, what's the number of classrooms now at Trotter and Neri?
It varies between six, seven, and eight.
Six classes?
So elementary, we have, you know, sections of six, seven, and eight.
So the average class sizes in K through eight was what?
Sixteen to twenty, pre-K through grade two, twenty-two through grade, actually eight, so it's three to eight.
Because if you look at that number, twelve twenty-two to fourteen eighty-five, you're looking at increases of two sixty-three. If you divide that amongst nine grades, you're trying to figure out what to do with 29 kids per grade approximately, right?
So you also have to look at how that demographic breaks out. Like you said, all middle school kids and all elementary schools.
It could all be eighth graders, but on average, 29 kids per grade, if your current concentration is 16 to 20, you're looking at minus to one and a half classrooms per grade, right?
Well, it's really two.
Two.
Two classes. You can't do a one and a half minus.
Interesting. I, I think that's important to understand in terms of voting terms, the long-term goal for those that felt we could put more room somewhere. And what Al was saying, if we had enough space to say, if, if we reach these projections, we're going to need four or five more classrooms. Because that's not really that much when you're thinking about 100 rooms, right? Like, it, it's a hard sell for that little amount. Nothing is not needed. So that's just my two steps, just looking at the data.
That's, that's the increase of students, but we still have to go back and talk about four and five at, at, at Neri right now. We have to, we have to solve that problem. And I agree with, with Roger. I'm concerned about spending a lot of money on a roof, which could trigger ADA compliance. It could trigger the suppression. We have no bias suppression. So all these things that we're going to be made to do, we need to have a, a number in totality before we make a decision. You know, because there's so much stuff. The asbestos has to be dealt with. The mold has to be dealt with. The egresses have to be dealt with. It's not as if we can just throw a roof on there and say, okay, we did one little thing and next budget, we'll do another little thing. It would have been nicer if we put it.
I see that, Jim.
Jason?
Go. I think Jason has, has a hand up.
Jason, go ahead.
Thank you. Obviously, I was very part of this discussion when we were the Neri Building Committee, but I guess my comments would be more from a capital planning perspective tonight. And while we didn't have a course to be performed, I don't think we have a course tonight. I just want to add a few things just for both elected boards to really think about that are posted for tonight. Is one, this decision is borderline paralyzing all of the capital needs of every town department in this town. We've heard from almost every town department at this point for this year, like absent vehicles, most decisions, you know, absent maybe public safety, come back to what you do in the Neri site. So I'd ask you all to think about, as you kind of formulate the next steps from a capital perspective and about the following. One, there's been some, you know, references to this, I think particularly by the superintendent, but unless any of you are professionals at building schools, we need to get the right level of support, whether that's a designer or an OPM that has been involved or not involved down in South Grove, that can be a decision for a future committee. But like, we need to stop by the amateur hour and I think it's really important that we get professionals involved that do this. And I would ask that you also look around at towns that are similar to us, that are partnering or, and/or not partnering with the MSBA. Most towns are passing these projects right now that have similar residential shifts. And I'm talking about a variety of different projects, whether it be renovations, new schools, et cetera. We need to look around and learn from what they're doing or not doing and try to emulate some of that to bring progress forward. I think the important decisions that stand in front of you are based on the feedback we got as part of the Neri vote. We need to know whether the Neri site is one that the town supports even looking at. That then will drive your decision about a roof, a renovation, or a new school. I think that's really important to think about and make sure that the town is around that site. And if not, you better start looking for alternative sites. Secondly, I think it's really important that we remember, everything we've heard throughout this whole process is we want our schools to be in a certain percentile within the state. And when we started talking about trying to cram and look at certain enrollment data and making certain assumptions and I greatly appreciated the comment Victor Hamilton made in particular in terms of like the what ifs, which seem to be additive in terms of enrollment, not necessarily decreasing. I think we need to think about those what ifs in terms of what that could mean for our school population. And are we just looking to fit students into a space? Are we looking to provide an educational experience that really drives kind of the value of our homes and what our community wants to output? So I think those are decisions that in front of you all as elected officials, as you're just, as someone's been through this process and looking at kind of the parameters that we're dealing with on the capital side, I think is, is really important for you all to understand and potentially, you know, deliberate here tonight or in future meetings.
So I'll just make one, what at least I think of as an important observation, which I think members on this board have been hearing fairly loudly of, of late about the level of taxes in town. And we're obviously talking about a major capital program. And the, the thing that, that frankly motivates me is that every dollar that we spend on capital and debt is a dollar we can't spend on teachers and policemen and firefighters. That's, that, that's the, the, the bottom line. And so I think we need to be cautious about this. My, I'm going to put my politician's hat on for a moment and suggest that you not bring number three back because all you'd be doing is, is waving a red flag in front of town meeting. That's my... And I will, I will note that when we did the survey, we've got some work to do. If, if Neri's going to be part of the mix as a school, then some work has to be done to convince the community why that's a, a good plan. There is a small, you know, you've got to get to two-thirds on the floor of town meeting to, to make that happen. And there is five to 10% that simply think that site's not appropriate for, for children. And so that makes it a, a tougher sell. I think it can be done. I, I would not take that off the table, but, you know.
You want to take what off the table? Using Neri site?
Yeah, I would not take that off the site, but I, I think you, you have to recognize sort of the, the political realities because at, at the end of the day, this is a political decision.
Al, if you want to take three off, and I understand why, four is more expensive than three. Look at four.
Yeah, but four could solve this 2060 number that we just looked at potentially in a different kind of way, so...
Well, four comes with its own set of problems, like what do we do with the other three buildings? Yeah, I, I, from where I sit, I think there are two choices when you really sort of work through the logic. And one is that Neri stays a school and we do what we need to do to make Neri into an appropriate school. Or Neri becomes a municipal building and Finn gets expanded. I, I, you know, if we're, if we're looking at the intersection of things which meet the educational vision and what I think is political reality, I think those are the ones that, that are there, you know? That, that's my two cents.
But can we more fully discuss those at the next meeting? Tonight, aside, this is the process. We are going to have a special town meeting. Going to have two, three, or four options that we're going to ask a designer to do a schematic design and cost out. And then that's what's coming back to the town meeting to actually keep voting until we have a, one that's going to get a two-thirds vote.
Right.
I agree. I mean, the next meeting, the meeting to hash out which are the options will be a significant meeting, right?
But they, it will be, it will be, however, the goal is that we bring several options. So you're not having to pick one, right? You're, you're picking what you want the town to decide they want to look at. And they may vote all three. They may vote one. But at least we know the direction of what people are looking for. And I think that's the biggest part of the feedback that we got after, after the...
One, one thing we didn't, we didn't talk too much about whether we need to form a school building committee as part of this. And if so, do we, would we need to do so in the next couple of months or just wait until? My view is wait until after there's a town meeting vote.
I agree. Get, get the cost, wait till you have a project and that's when you form the, the building committee. Wait until the project is, you know, and you could see that at the special town meeting, if you had one article that had two, three, or four choices, that someone could keep amending it if they wanted to eliminate one till we get to one that again passes. If you, you wouldn't need a two-thirds vote for that if we were going to pay for it versus debt, if the number's right that I gave you.
As a reminder, the SBA does not allow that. So if we were going for their money, they make you call it down to one choice, which is what we have to do.
Well, you're right as far as, but what you could have done, which we didn't think about doing in all honesty, you could have put the MSBA project there and you could have put two non-MBA projects. We could have done that. We didn't think about doing because we were so focused on MSBA. So that's the way you'd have to do this. So you're right, you can't have more than one MSBA project at one time.
They only allow you to bring one forward. You have to take 12 and, 12 and we brought them down to one. So you have to make a decision because that's their rule, play by their rules.
So my question is, there are so many variables in terms of being educationally okay. Is it, is it impossible for regular citizens coming in to vote to know what all those nuances are so that they could vote wisely? In other words, wouldn't it require a lot of education of the residents of town to, to make, to make, so that they could vote wisely as opposed to what was the cheapest or not in my neighborhood? How would you do that?
Yeah, I mean, I think we learned a lot from, you know, five years of work and feedback from the community around having a clear and concise message around what are educational benefits that we're trying to accomplish?
Yes.
And what are we trying to solve? And we spent a lot of time this summer and in the past five years articulating, you know, what options meet educational vision that we have. That would be our anchor document as a starting point because it lays out each of the options that were, were considered. And I think just, you know, I think doing a better job marketing and communicating.
Thank you.
You know, sort of following Al's comment about the town sent a message that they didn't want to spend any money. You know, we, I was on the committee and I had second guessed myself quite a bit. I don't think we did a good job on certain things. And again, I was right there. I thought that educational value would be a key. And so when I stood up at town meeting, said, I want to talk about educational value and then just got glued out of the room, I realized that, you know what, I guessed wrong on that. I think the big mistake was to not go along with this hype dream that we're not going to have to spend any money. And the reality is, we probably should have done a better job of saying, look, the alternatives to this project ultimately are going to cost you the more, more money. But, you know, spill them out because taxes are going up, folks, right? It's just a question of what they're going to be spending on.
I think we learned a lot along the process. We have a field of, we have something to solve in front of us. And I think we have to look at, you know, coming up with what that solution potentially could be. Gain citizen support, make sure it's fiscally responsible. Hopefully bring a project that people can support and meets, you know, the educational needs of our children for the next...
Are you taking audience sharing with something?
I wasn't here from beginning of the meeting.
We don't have audience sharing tonight on this portion of the meeting. We're just going to let the boards and committees operate and then...
We would, we haven't talked about what day the meeting would be and that would be a significant thing we need to hash out between now and soon, right?
This is the second joint meeting you're talking about?
No, we're talking about this actual special town meeting date.
Do you want to talk about that? Start to talk about that now or talk about it?
I'd recommend we, we brought the idea for process. Do we, do we read accounts shortly and then...
Do you want us to at our next select board meeting?
I mean, I guess I'll take your lead.
How about this? At our next select board meeting next week, next Tuesday, we could start to talk about potential dates that are available and we'd work with the town clerk to find out what's available. Sound good?
I think that's it. So do we want to try to schedule a meeting in December to talk about, like get into the actual nitty-gritty of what the options could be for that and how we set it up if we do three or four articles or if we're doing one article for all projects and getting those costed out?
And do you, okay, and this would need to pick the projects, but not necessarily to put numbers on?
Well, I think you need to have numbers for feasibility and schematic design because that's what you're asking for, right?
So we're talking about going through schematic, getting through schematic design, which is what we did to price it out with the last one. So that way you really got a design to show the estimator. So the architects designed three, four, whatever, and then the estimators will come forth and basically price those three or four. And that's what you bring back to town meeting to hopefully six months, seven months later at another special town meeting.
Right.
But I still say I don't want to stand like a stuck wrecker. Marcy is a very reasonable human being. She with sincerity opposed the project because she does believe that there's enough room in the buildings right now. That's what she was alluding to a few minutes ago, to be able to solve the problem with using what we have now, closing Neri and using that. So I still think between now and this meeting, we've got, and mostly going to follow you guys. You've got to make, you know, you've really got to build the case using the current demographics, why that's not acceptable as far as your view of what is the right thing to do to properly advocate kids here.
I mean, Greg and team all summer have detailed spreadsheets of this, we would not have this. We would not have, I mean, if you want to see that detail, connect with, with Greg. I mean, it's, it's to the exact program and that we would, would not be able to accomplish, so...
I mean, it's also, we can call the meeting advisory and have...
Of course, yes.
So we're a little ahead of the...
But if, but if that's the detail that you're looking to, like...
I think, I think there's more than that. I appreciate that Kathy. I think there's definitely more than that for me. I'm going to vote. But I think that represents a large audience of those that are going to have that question. So when I work through it logically, I really appreciate the slides tonight and sort of the direction and the conversation. But when I see that, I think, well, there's still some room here, but a lot of big questions.
I think it would be helpful if you could sit down with Greg and I or Stephanie. Stephanie's really a guru in, in the work that was done over the summer. And it really got into specifics, if that's what you're looking for in the detail. Understand that that's not the be all and all, but I think there's, there's a lot of good data there that if it has the floor plan and so we could certainly walk you through that.
I'm sure Andrew can make some questions too, or two, so...
Am I allowed to speak at this?
Go ahead.
So I think it's very, very productive discussion. What I'd say is, coming out of the work that we did over the summertime, you've got four options that the school committee supported. We know one of them failed. Unlikely that it would ever get supported again. That's an assumption. You may disagree with me, Roger, that's fine.
Well, I don't...
A five-grade school, we know it's going to cost more.
That's right, I don't know why, why people are afraid of it.
I think it's right on the head. The one thing we didn't have is accuracy in numbers. But we had, you support the first two options. To me, that's the most obvious point. Is spend some money to understand that in more detail. That was, again, that was our challenge is we were using legacy data, which you always were. But to put something in front of the town where those are viable options using an existing building or expanding the footprint, which from the people that I spoke to on the no vote, that's what they were looking for is other options besides building a four-grade school, trying to use existing capacity or potentially renovate the building. So I think you're spot on is to spend some money to understand that in more detail. I think it's two options. I don't think it's three. I mean, to be very specific, I think it's two.
Okay. We're going to get into that in the, in the next meeting.
No, but I'm just letting you know, based on the work that we did, that was the most obvious, those are the two most obvious choices because again, you supported it. Two of them, you know that they're never going to get, at Al's point, they're never going to get.
What's the other one you're not going to get of the four?
The first two.
No, the five-grade school and the four-grade.
The five-grade school and new school. Whatever the, maybe you spend the money to do that, that's fine. But if you took the cost argument relative to the consideration that we have existing resources to use, my suspicion is if I were betting, ma'am, I wouldn't take that.
I just want to make sure I knew what your two are. And Chelsea, again, your call, but this time, you know, lessons learned, right? We learned some lessons. We learned some lessons from, from the Phil vote, but this time, uh, we need, we need to make, you know, we've all been on advisory, most of us, right?
Yeah.
Uh, we need to make sure advisory is involved in the decision as to what goes on that warrant as far as projects too, so that we've got their support, um, as far as what's being brought forth. So they should be very, they should be part of that meeting too in December.
Yeah, just to be, make sure that I understand, the two options, we're speaking in order of the five-grade school or renovating Erie. Is that what you're thinking?
No, no, it's right. Fin with what?
It's actually seven-grade school.
The first two, the first two options that were voted.
Pre-K through five is seven.
Erie full reno and then Finn expand.
The Erie round and, um.
Finn expand.
What I just, what I just said.
Yeah. I thought I heard you. I was thinking it was in the house, sorry.
One and two.
Exactly, one and two.
Could we go to the cost estimates because I have, I, I'd like to, I, um, yeah, could you, um, all of the, uh, those that are projected through 36, they don't all happen at once. Could you put some dates on when you think that would be, I'd like to get a picture of, 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 of the debt service that's required to, to support, you know, this particular thing because the debt service obvious is thing that drives the tax.
They've got it in their capital plan, like by year.
We can share it now, we can share it with you, Kathy.
Yeah, okay.
If you want to stick around another two hours, we'll get through that.
So Chelsea, could I just, I'm, I'm understanding the issues about square feet and how much money and what the budgets are looking like. I think what got lost in the shuffle was what it's like to be a teacher in Erie year after year in that environment and how difficult it can be versus what could be offered instead. Um, I think that the subjective part of it, I was missing that. You see a design for a new school and you think, ah, lovely, expensive, but the quality of what it's like to work and study in that building kind of got a little lost. And I think there were huge benefits to having not a school that has no windows in the library below, um, but something that would be broader. And I think that to focus it not as like we want your money for our school, but as look at what your children will have if this happens. In other words, focus on the benefit added to the community, not just in terms of rankings, but in terms of just people saying, wow, that is a great school for a good experience.
You know, one thing that kept being said pursuant to that, um, that was just wrong is, you know, you know, if you maintain the school, um, you wouldn't have to be doing this. Well, schools don't last but fifty or sixty years. You know, we don't have a one-room schoolhouse anymore. Things change as far as how you teach kids. And so the school that was proposed did exactly what you said, and you're right, we did not get that message out there, um, although there was so much work spent on, you know, designing it with parents. We sat down and did all those workshops with parents as far as how to design. We've got so many kids that need extra help, it did all that. So you're right, that got lost, so maybe this time we really do try to even emphasize more of that piece of it when we decide on what projects are going to go forth as far as considerations.
Can I, can I ask about this letter now? About timings there? When, what's our current projected spring town meeting?
April.
April eleventh.
Yeah, so we're not far off the, the time within this. So are we in a point where maybe a survey would go out to call down from the four down to maybe two and bring two of them back to a town meeting, vote, maybe bring it to an annual town meeting, not to do a special town meeting, make it one of the first things on the, um, on there, so that way we can, we don't have to spend more money for a town meeting to do maybe like a really limited agenda when we have a town meeting coming right after it near the same timeline?
You mean do a survey instead of a meeting, town meeting?
Well, we could take the four options, like, I mean, for what it's worth, the pre-K committee spent a lot of time looking at these options. We have at least buckets of numbers that are relatively something to consider on the scale of what this is. And that was the point of what that work was, to have a scale of what the, of what the options were. If we brought a scale back to the town in the meantime, that we could get from four down to two, and then we could take the two to town, to annual town meeting for approval of schematic design and feasibility, we're not going to do extra money on options that don't have support, and we'd be able to not call it extra town meeting for maybe one or two articles or whatever, we would really stick on that special meeting at that timeframe.
Is this part of the purpose of the extra town meeting? To try to determine what the town wants as far as choices as opposed to telling them, these are the choices you got? Because you don't you run the risk?
When we, when we have special town meetings, it's usually something big. This is as big as it gets. That's how we did the public safety building. And the numbers that were used this summer were from the, the PDP I've got in front of me and pursuant to what Eric just said, um, you got to understand how these, these numbers got scaled down. So these are, were very general numbers that were used for this, the, by the time. Um, so for example, we started with, we thought the four-grade school was going to cost one hundred forty-six million. By the time we had actually had gone through two separate cost estimates, it was down to a hundred eight. We never did that with the others. So these, bringing these numbers forward, like Eric said, are probably not a very good idea. You need to compare apples to apples and getting the schematic design done and having someone price two, three, four, I still think is the right way to go, um, and do it as a special town meeting where people are coming just to focus on this one issue and not all the things that get mushed together at an annual town meeting.
To Kathy's point, the other, the, um, in the capital plan, those numbers are not by a professional, as Jason said. So those are cost estimates that the school department were able to get and ascertain, but they're not done by, you know, so if we're looking at fourteen million for some pro, you know, one school over the next ten years, we're not positive of those and certainly there's escalation.
Right, you, you've got to use the best data available today, that's the best data available until there's better data.
That's what I'm saying, we need a professional because we're not professionals in, in the building trade, so we know, need to know exactly what it's going to cost.
And that's all the town meeting vote would be, to be spend the money on professionals to hit the numbers for a couple different options. And I do think it's such a significant debate that it does deserve its own standalone to debate its worth, you know, cost of the, you know, AV, et cetera, and setting up a, a meeting for this. So I think there's a consensus, is there? Uh, not on, not on, not on what projects, but that.
And not on the date, but the process.
On the process.
So we meet again in December and pick the projects and pick the date, and we'll talk about the date on Tuesday, right?
Yes. Okay, but are we also picking another date now for a joint meeting with the school committee further? If so, we probably should just do that now, right?
Yeah, I think, I think we need to, I think it needs to be all four committees.
Um, Mark, do you know when? I know in our, on our budget calendar, we have a date for the first meeting with capital, and I don't know, I don't know if Jason knows that or if I'm wrong here, but, you know, at least one year we've had, we had a meeting with capital, we got a preview of what the capital projects are. I'm just thinking about how this meeting relates to that.
Yeah, I don't have that date offhand, but.
So we'd be coming to, to this meeting again another Wednesday?
So our December meeting is December tenth.
Yeah, I'm not here on the tenth.
Can you zoom?
Uh, it will be do, uh, I'm going to be on an airplane.
No.
The whole day.
That's a no, right?
Or, um, you could come to one of our meetings, which would be December second or December sixteenth.
Or do a special one on the ninth just for this because capital's coming too, advisory. Um, you guys are still meeting on Wednesdays?
More flexible, but yeah, usually Wednesday, Tuesday, so they could come to ours on December ninth.
Do you want to do an off meeting so that you're not, not doing your full agenda, I mean, an off night, so you're not doing your full agenda after?
So, yeah, that's what December ninth would be.
Yeah.
Six, six-thirty, seven o'clock?
Does that work for?
Al, you're here then, on the ninth?
On the ninth.
Or ninth, uh, yeah, I'm here on the ninth.
Does that work for advise, or at least the subset of advisory?
Yeah, it's just nine before.
Jason, are you still on for capital?
You have any tasks?
Okay.
But preceding the whole joint, we have a forum.
All right. All right. All right.
You said?
Where?
Here, Public Safety.
Let's do Public Safety.
Yeah, so we can, so it can be hybrid.
It's a little bit, this is a little clunky.
Were we also going to talk about capital projects for the?
No.
Okay, all right. That's the, this is its own.
No, I mean, we kind of touched on it, but I think the sooner we can get in front of advisory and select board for FY twenty-six budget and capital, the better.
Okay, so then would it be timely for us to take a motion, have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so we've got a motion to adjourn in the second, all those in favor? All those approved?
And, uh, school committee, I move that we adjourn at seven fifty-three. Uh, is Alan still on?
And now they can get him back.
I'm adjourned, yeah, so all in favor? All right, I think Alan dropped. All right, so we're going to brief that briefly. All right, um, good evening, everyone. I'm calling the Southborough School Committee meeting to order at eight oh three PM on November twelfth, twenty twenty-five. This is our regularly, regular monthly meeting, and first order of business is public comment. If you have any comment, feel free to raise your hand. Takers? All right, next is new business. So, um, we gave Principal Hershak the night off, um, so he will be presenting, um, the Trotter Middle School Improvement Plan next month, and we'll just have a longer update on the principal's report, um, next month. So B three is the Southborough pre-K program update. Greg?
So just a brief update that we continue to, um, move plans forward to move Northborough preschool back to Northborough, um, so it does not impact the preschool program in Southborough. Um, we do acknowledge that this is an impact to teachers in the sense that they have built a nice team, Northborough and Southborough, um, but at this time, the priority is really making sure that we're, um, servicing the citizens of, of Northborough with preschool programs that are in Northborough. So our moving plans forward, we have communicated, communicated that to the Northborough School Committee, um, we've communicated this to the preschool teachers, and after this evening's meeting, we will be communicating, um, this information to Northborough, uh, parents as well. So just wanted to keep the school committee informed.
Thank you, any questions on that? Approval of grants donations?
None at this time.
I was like, oh, I missed it, something, okay. Um, all right, review of timeline for principal search processes, Finn and Erie.
Sure, so, um, we have two very important positions to hire for, um, the principalship at Finn and the principalship at Erie. Um, we are going to have two parallel search processes in place with two, um, search committees. Um, our intent is to advertise the positions, um, this December, so December first, and we will have the advertisement, um, running through the end of December. Um, and during the month of December, we will be, um, seeking, uh, interest and applications to serve on both committees. Both committees will be reflective of the school community, so we'll have parents, educators, um, school leaders, um, and really make sure we have a comprehensive, uh, interview committee to move forward this work. Once we get the committees moving forward, so we plan on, um, interviewing in the month of January, um, we will go through the process, we will do interviews, we will do site visits, we will have candidates visit us, um, and then we will name finalists for each of the positions. Usually it's maybe one or two or three for each position. Um, and then there'll be a second round of interviews with a central office leadership team and mem, and a few members of the initial screening team. And then our goal is to make an, an appointment for both positions, um, early February, um, preceding February vacation. So that is the timeline in the plan.
Any questions on that?
Two separate committees, right?
Two separate committees.
All business, Erie Beta Corrected Final Report.
Yeah, so including your packet is the corrected, uh, beta report. Uh, there was an, an error in the initial one that was sent in September, so this one does have the proper appendixes and is the complete report that we're keeping on file. Uh, so that was the comprehensive report they did, uh, for the Erie school, so it included all the things it needs to include in this one that we have now on rec, on record.
And then the action item report, our plan for Erie and Finn environmental evaluation?
So based on both of the reports that Beta did, they did a comprehensive report for both Erie and Finn, they were separate reports. Uh, we took the time to analyze the recommendations, um, of those and the results of those and came up with an action plan that those, both those plans are in your packets. It's really separated into two different sections. One is the asbestos, uh, management program, which is very similar to what we've been doing for a while, potentially with some steps to mitigate that. Um, the second is certainly for moisture mitigation in both the spaces. What we're doing ongoing is, as well as what we potentially could do down the road. A few of those items are pending as we evaluate the different options and getting in some cost estimates and things of that nature. But these plans are, are certainly ones we will keep updated and, and brief the committee as we make progress. But I would comment on, you know, none of these things are new, a lot of these things are ongoing things that we were already doing, but this is a good way to document it against the report that was created by Beta, which we're extremely appreciative of.
And do we update our asbestos management plan yearly?
Yes, so in, in addition to yearly, we are due for a three-year in, inspection in the upcoming year, so that's something we're going to complete, which does do an even more in-depth job of evaluating what we've done so far and then forecasting what we're going to need to do in the near future.
Anybody have any questions on the, either the report or this action plan? I mean, the, the reports were pretty lengthy and thorough, thorough, and, um, the data that Keith provided also had the historical information from, was it two years ago?
Two years ago.
Yeah, okay. So do you think that we should, um, have this refreshed, like, quarterly? Or like, what's, uh?
I think annually.
Annually for this too? Okay.
Has this been shared with the, uh, other committees like capital and board of selectmen? I think that might, no?
We commented on it in Southborough, we met with capital, I believe.
I thought so.
Just, just the beta report in general, especially as we were bringing forth like the, the Finn floors, which we'll talk about a little later in the agenda, as an example of how it connects.
But maybe when we do our capital portion with advisory and, I know you already met with capital, but I assume they'll, they'll be part of that conversation, um, that we include this as well as our capital plan.
I think it would be a good idea.
Very helpful.
All right, are we good on that? Um, next is the subcommittee and liaison assignments. So, um, I asked for this to be put on because I'm the wellness subcommittee rep and I'm having a hard time getting to the meeting. So I was hoping we could have, um, an additional school committee member, um, who has, who's interested in, um, doing this. The meetings tend to be at three o'clock.
On, like, my free or?
Um, I think it's on Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, which I am not available.
I'm okay for that because I know you guys have pickup.
I know, yeah.
And that's hard.
I can't get away from that anymore.
I can do that if you want.
All right.
I, I, as long as I can arrange it, I can.
Yeah, and they meet on Zoom, Denise.
Oh, good.
So, yeah.
That's better, but I mean, you guys have pickup.
I know. I know.
I don't have.
All right, thanks Denise.
You're welcome.
Do we need to vote that? All right. So I'll let, uh, Mary Ellen know that you will also be joining that. Thank you. Enrollments.
Yes, so in your packet is the, uh, enrollment report as of ten sixteen twenty twenty-five. We are looking at, um, enrollments for twenty-six, twenty-seven. It's hard to say that, doesn't roll off the tongue. And thinking about how many sections of each grade level we will need for next year. I will note that next year at, um, Erie, we are going to have to add two sections, um, so we will have, um, fifth grade and fourth grade at seven and eight sections, so, um, just, uh, just noting that. So we will have, um, fifth grade and fourth grade at seven and eight sections. So, um, just, uh, just noting that. And we are, um, calculating that in our budget projections. Also in your report, um, is the NESDEC enrollment projections for twenty five, twenty six. I know we talked about those briefly, um, about a half an hour ago. I think that, um, you know, my general comment is that we rely on the expertise of NESDEC to conduct these demographic studies. You know, I think our job is to think about how accurate are they? How do we use the data, um, to inform decisions that we make for, uh, future years? And again, as I, I did mention, we are anticipating, um, about a twenty-two percent increase in our, well, NESDEC is, is projecting a twenty, uh, to twenty-two percent increase in K through eight enrollments, um, over the next decade. This is something for us to pay attention to.
Any questions on that? I know we talked a lot about it a moment earlier. FY twenty six budget line item transfers, Becky?
Uh, yes, so there are two new, um, line items that are over expended in the FY twenty six budget. The first one is the health services account, and that's thirty-two hundred. Um, that is over expended by about seventeen thousand dollars. And that is due to the fact that the district did hire a new district float nurse to go through among the ten schools in the district. While we did bring that person on, we do anticipate a reduction in the substitute line. And it will also give us consistency, um, in terms of having someone as a backup in all, all of our buildings. The other line is the tech infrastructure maintenance and support salaries line, and that is over by forty dollars and eighty cents. And that's due to the fact that a travel stipend was actually charged to the wrong account. Um, it will be moved to the correct account. But I would just ask for the committee to vote on it since it is right now showing as a negative expenditure. Do you want me to continue with the monthly general fund report?
Yeah.
So the report that's in your packet is as of October thirty first. And so we are right now, we're, we're closing in on almost half a year of expenses. The budget balance is one hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars, um, which represents point seven-seven percent of the total operational budget. I'd say the one area that we're probably watching closely is the special education transportation. That continues, uh, to, to be one that we're having, uh, difficulty projecting just because we have not received any invoices yet for, um, this current school year. But we, so that is something that we have reached out to Aspen Valley Collaborative, just to see if we can get those invoices so that we have some better numbers.
Do we know why they're so delayed in invoicing this?
We, we don't. Um, this, uh, unfortunately, last year it was true because we were dealing with the van pool situation. So I don't know, um, what is happening with caps for kids because, um, last year they were very prompt for those.
All right, any questions on either of those? All right, so I'll move that the school committee approve the, um, FY twenty six budget line item transfers for health services and technology infrastructure maintenance and support salaries. And, um, accept the FY twenty six monthly general fund report as of October thirty first, twenty twenty five until audited.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor? For all. Thank you. Right. Approval of FY twenty six federal and state grants?
So also included in your packet is a listing of all of the grants that we have received, um, so far in fiscal year twenty six. So this does include the federal entitlement grants, which are the, um, titles, uh, one, two, three, four, as well as our IDEA grants, um, for special education. It also includes the Prism Grant that Stephanie had presented, um, last month. And there are actually, um, two new updates on, um, a couple of the grants, the interpreter in education training. We've actually just learned that we have, um, tentatively been awarded that grant. We're waiting for the official award, but that will be coming our way, as well as the hate crimes prevention. So that is a, a new grant, um, that the committee has not yet seen. We did receive that last year. So we are thankful that we have also received that, um, in FY twenty six. So all of those grants do total nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And I would ask that the committee vote to accept these grants.
So do we set these, do we take these in as revenue and then paid out of another line item? Or do we actually pay for whatever we're spending out of the grant, out of like a, an account that was set for that specific grant?
We set up a specific account for that grant?
Okay.
Yes, we have many account numbers.
A lot of it.
Okay.
And actually, if you look at that district fund code, that, that's the account, the beginning of our account numbers.
Got it. Oh, okay.
Um, we have not assigned one yet for interpreter.
What is the interpreter in education training?
That is, um, a grant that, um, Salvi O'Oriola is taking the lead on. And it is going to allow us to train more interpreters or take our existing interpreters to a higher level.
So they're internal staff?
Uh, they could be internal staff, but some of them, um, might be people who are not yet interpreting for us and, and want to get the training. Some of them do interpret for us, but there, there are multiple levels of interpretation training. And so this will support increasing the skills and adding to our, um, team.
Great. Anybody have any comments or questions on any of these? All right, so I'll move that.
The bulk of these are just the two, the two big grants, right?
Yeah.
Especially.
Yeah, yeah. The Prism one. Which that one, that one's new this year, right?
It's our second year. It was very small last year because we just paid for the, the, like, assessment and planning for this year.
And, but we're actually funding an, at least one employee out of this right now.
Correct.
Okay. And this is all Southborough money? This isn't?
That is all Southborough, yeah.
Right. So I'll move that the school committee accept the grant allocation as listed for a total of nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars? Any discussion? All in favor? For all. Thank you. Approval of, uh, pick war- warrants and payrolls?
So also included are all of the, um, the warrants and the payroll that have, um, happened since the last school committee meeting. As you can see, that we actually had three cycles. There was one that was very close, um, but was not quite finished, um, when we prepared the packet. So, uh, we just ask for your approval on everything as listed, and they have all been signed up on through DocuSign.
Okay, any questions on those? I move that we approve the warrants and payrolls as listed in the packet.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? For all. Thank you. All right, Capital?
Okay, included in your packet is the, you know, Capital Plan. I know we had a variety of pieces of it. Were discussed in the earlier part of our meeting. I think it's important just to make sure that we have an understanding on what will be the request for FY twenty seven. That's the most prominent thing we have on the table. Um, so as listed here, we would have the remainder of the FIN floor replacement project. Uh, we feel that that hundred and, uh, eight hundred and ten thousand dollars would be the delta of the remaining floors that need to be completed. And I did, uh, double check on that today. That is an accurate number. The second would be drop down to the Woodward School, where that would be the completion of the technology, infrastructure and equipment, uh, improvement that started last year. That would be the delta of classrooms to finish off the Woodward School and complete that. The next is part of a comprehensive review of the security system, which gets into, uh, security cameras and access controls and a variety of different pieces. I've been working on a, a long-term, uh, project for that, but the first phase could be, um, at the Woodward School. And it would be in conjunction with the Trotter School for a half a million dollars. So three hundred for Woodward, um, and then five hundred for Trotter, which would take, um, it would be about half of what we would anticipate total. Uh, what it would take to get the, all four schools, uh, completed with the, um, improvements we're hoping to make. And then the last is, uh, for the Trotter School, uh, in the middle of the MSBA Accelerate Repair Project. Uh, that five point eight million is what we had on our last report. Uh, they are very close to coming up with cost estimates for what the Trotter Roof will be. And the option of whether a, a metal roof or a shingled roof would be advised, uh, is, is coming forth. They have a, a deadline for MSBA, um, in early December. So I am expecting something, um, solid in the next couple of weeks, and we'll certainly keep you apprised of any adjustments to that number as, as things move forward. The second one for Trotter is similar to Woodward. It would be the full, uh, tech, technology, infrastructure and equipment additions for the entire Trotter School at a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Uh, this was something that we also double checked on to make sure it was a solid number to take care of all the classrooms at Trotter. And lastly, as mentioned before, the security system upgrades for Trotter, which would be coupled with Woodward. So those are the FY twenty seven requests. As Greg mentioned earlier, we did meet with the, uh, town Capital Plan to review those. Uh, there won't, weren't significant questions about it and, you know, looking forward to hopefully with your approval tonight, taking the next steps of working with the town department so that we can put forth, uh, warrant articles if it's deemed necessary.
So for the Trotter Security System, this is in addition to the grant that we used for security upgrades two years ago?
Correct. And the good part is all those things that we were able to get grant funding for, which was just fifty thousand dollars. This is obviously in addition to that with where we really need to go.
Okay, so we probably need to talk about that, um, in an executive.
I would agree.
Okay. I won't ask anymore.
Thank you.
And the, the floor for FIN, we've done this in phases and now this is like, get it all done?
This one. We've learned a lot in the last couple of summers between doing a hallway down the preschool hallway and doing a, a couple of, uh, classrooms. We're pretty confident with what it, what it requires, what it takes. There's a mild escalation in these costs because we know that things are just going up the more we do. You know, that's one thing that'll certainly be saved by doing it all together in bulk. It would be one very large procurement. And it was something that we could take care of in one swoop.
And we would do it during the summer?
Uh, definitely.
Okay.
And we would likely, you know, yes, we would definitely do it during the summer, uh, months. And then work with, you know, the new principal of the FIN school if anything needed to leak over.
Right.
No pun intended.
And we think that that, that would help to mitigate the mold issues that we're having.
It would. And then what you would see next at the, at the FIN school is even in a couple of years out, uh, doing a roof replacement. So what we learned from a couple of years ago is that we are getting seepage from, from the ground up.
Yeah.
As well as potentially, you know, leakage from the roof down. So if we take care of those two layers, we're confident we've done a lot to, you know, prevent any major issues moving forward. And we did talk about it briefly also was that, uh, infrastructure on the outside of the building potentially to divert any water that would be making its way underneath the foundation.
So what we don't have on here for FIN is, um, central air or some sort of cooling, do we?
FY thirty two.
FY thirty two, yeah. Mechanical system replacement.
Oh, that's your eight million?
Yeah.
So that, is that, is that just air conditioning?
That would be the replacement of, it would require a replacement of the system to, and also include heating and air conditioning for the FIN school, based on reports that we've had completed in the last couple of years.
So why did we pick FY thirty two? Because that's when the system is ready to be replaced?
Yeah, I mean, we're forecasting, we had to replace one rooftop unit in the last, uh, twenty-four months. That was the office unit. We're in pretty good shape. We have had them evaluated. They're good. They're going to get to that, you know. Building was open in ninety-nine, so we're getting to that twenty-five plus window with a lot of that equipment. And, yeah, that's why it would be phased out more towards the thirty year.
Makes sense.
I'm just, so we put in the air conditioner units.
Yep.
Which probably help, kind of.
Yep, no, absolutely. They do help.
Right. They're inefficient, I would assume.
They're not as efficient as a full system.
Okay, that's a better way to phrase it.
Thank you.
So I'm just, like, given the conversation we just had, um, and preserving our buildings and looking at twenty sixty-four as when FIN would need to be done, like, I'm just, I'm not going to change it for, I'm not going to put it in FY twenty seven. But, um, I'm just thinking, like, do we need to move that?
So I, I would just comment that, um, the real key is identifying what projects we're going to prioritize for this year.
Yeah.
And this is our, our best thinking moving forward.
Yeah.
I think as we look at the FY twenty seven, um, you know, FY twenty-eight Capital Plan, we can start to.
Yeah.
To shift, um, priorities within that window of time.
Got it. Yeah, okay. I'm good on the other.
And just a, just a general comment, the, the numbers, um, on the slide that I presented at the earlier meeting, um, were directly from our Capital Plan. So the details of those numbers are, um, found on the document you have in front of you.
I mean, I think the, the only, the only hesitation that I'm having on approving this tonight is on the NEARI roof. Right? Because I, I, I'm having, I'm, I'm struggling with, like, the chicken or the egg thing, right? And I really, do you want to say something?
Well, we share a reason that we need to approve it tonight. And I heard, I heard that Jason mentioned that, that things are just kind of sitting for a while until we get through.
Well, you can approve, approve it. You can approve the plan. And then, um, and then just make a notation that you want to revisit NEARI.
Yeah.
This does not mean that every project in FY twenty seven we're going to, or the committee is going to move forward. These are, these are what we are prioritizing. I agree, there's a lot more questions than answers around what the timeline and process is, um, for NEARI, if that is the path we move forward with.
Yeah.
I agree with Chelsea. I'm very nervous about that NEARI, only because we don't know, even if we just, as I said earlier, if we just do a roof, what that's going to entail and, and trigger. And so it's kind of a misnomer. And, and again, the committee was, was, uh, in a position to try to defend why nothing was done for five years. But when you think you're going to replace the building, why would you spend, uh, any money on it if you're going to replace it? And we're sort of like, like Chelsea said, the chicken and the egg. What are we going to do without spending good money after bad?
I almost think that we keep it as a placeholder, even potentially put it as a warrant article for annual town meeting, depending on the path that we take to do a potential special town meeting. Because I think you need, I think you need to have it as a fallback plan, um, if nothing else gets through. We don't have at least a, uh, path forward for feasibility and schematic design for potential projects. So I think, I think we, at least my recommendation is that we, we can approve it. We can always remove it. It's easy, I think it's easier to remove something than to add something.
I think it signals to the community that, that there is a, a project need at some point. And I agree, listing it is important.
So you're saying approve the plan, but reserve the right to come back to NEARI, the roof?
Yeah. Yeah. And I think we, I mean, I think we can come back to any of this.
We can.
But I'm just saying, I think it's probably easier to leave it in there and then take it away.
And also point, but point it out.
Yeah. All right. Anybody else have any questions on that? All right, so I'll move that the school committee approve the FY twenty seven Capital Plan. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Revolving accounts.
Okay, so also included in your packet, um, are the revolving accounts for both Southborough as well as the preschool program, um, which is housed in the, um, regional, um, budget. So in terms of food services, we are continuing to see, I'd say, um, revenue. However, this report is only reflective as of September thirty of twenty twenty five. And so we had only really received for those few days in August that school was in operation. So that's why the revenues look so low. In terms of the facility rental, again, we've only received a small amount, um, of rental and that. and that is for the use of the building by outside organizations. And then extended day continues to remain healthy in terms of their revenue. I just, I know I always point this out every month, but the encumbrances for both the food services and the extended day program are really only for the known payroll and salaries. So there are other expenditures that are needed and that are done throughout the year. So that's why their fund balances do look a little bit higher, because we don't have everything set aside as encumbrances for those two areas. In terms of the preschool, one thing I do want to just point out is, you know, piggybacking on the conversation earlier about the preschool program. So for FY27, we will be creating a revolving account in South Row for the preschool program. So no longer will it be at the regional. We will have two separate revolving accounts in North Row and in South Row. So that's just something for the committee to be aware of. But as of right now, you know, the preschool is sustaining the expenses that are attributed to the revolving account. And so right now, at the end of the year, we do anticipate a fund balance of approximately $60,000. And so that will be used to help facilitate the movement of this program.
So this right now is a a revolving account that falls under us, under South Row?
The preschool is actually housed at the region.
So what's going to happen with this revolving account?
So this revolving account, we will have to spend down. And so those funds can be used towards the two preschool programs in both North Row and South Row. So to help both of them get set up.
Okay.
Since they will both be in their own spaces.
So we won't have a starting balance July 1 of '26 in the South Row preschool revolving account?
You may, because we will have to start taking tuition. We start to deposit in February. So when that happens, then I will start to report on that as well.
Got it.
Have you scheduled another food services presentation where they bring actual food?
Just pictures.
Point of order. That has not been scheduled yet.
Just pictures.
Just pictures.
They offered for us to go to one cafeteria.
Well, what we can what we can do the day that we have our next, we'll grab lunch for you and keep it.
On a tray, sitting at your spot.
We can do that.
Okay. The FY27 budget priorities?
So I know the school committee has had several conversations and meetings to discuss the priorities. So, you know, it would be great to vote the priorities this evening so that we can continue to work on the FY27 budget.
Does anybody have any updates or changes to any of these?
I have nothing.
Okay. All right. So I'll move that we approve the FY27 budget priorities. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
This looks like we talked about as far as getting some things.
Yeah.
Seems reflective of our discussion.
I think Becky captured this. Thank you, Becky. All right, budget calendar?
So we continue to add dates to our budget calendar. I think that tonight's a milestone date in terms of kind of launching the budget process for the school committee. And we will be presenting the FY27 preliminary budget presentation later in the meeting. And just want to thank Cheryl for keeping us, keeping all the dates organized and keeping us on target in terms of key mile, key budget milestones.
Cheryl? All right, the preliminary budget discussion. Becky?
So I'll I'll launch and turn it over to Becky. No, that's fine. So as you know, we've been, we started the budget process in August, working closely with principals and district leaders, thinking about what we want to accomplish. So the budget is a vehicle to accomplish our outcomes for students. Principals and directors worked all during September and October, drafting their budgets and presenting those to the financial department. Becky and her team have taken those budgets and actually created the first preliminary budget for us to talk about. And we continue internally to have conversations around what we're trying to accomplish, how we can impact what students experience in the classroom, and then also centering on the budget initiatives outlined in the school committee priorities. So again, this is the first draft, and I'll turn it over to Becky to give the presentation.
Thank you. So as Greg mentioned, we do have internal conversations while we're thinking about the building of the FY27 budget. And all of those conversations really are centered around the district's core values, the portrait of a graduate, and then also our mission and our vision. And part of that work is also involves the action plan that we have. We are looking at that, looking to see what initiatives and objectives we are still working on, and looking to see how we can utilize the formation of the budget to make those initiatives and objectives successful and complete. So in looking at the budget process, and Greg mentioned all the steps that we've taken so far, here we are in November with our first preliminary budget being presented to the school committee. And then tonight, we also had the approval of the budget priorities and the approval of the FY27 capital plan. So a few milestones that we can check off of our of our list. And that work does continue up until the April town meeting, which has just been confirmed for Saturday, April 7, I believe.
Eleven.
Or eleven.
Eleven.
Eleven, yes. Did get that confirmed by the town manager tonight, so. We thought it would be helpful just to show the committee what our demographics look like. This is really a great chart, I think, that NASTF put together that shows both the historical as well as the projected enrollments. The dark green represents our K through 5 population. The teal, the middle color, is the middle school. And then the light green is the high school. And you can really see that we saw, you know, a drop off in the late, about, I think, 2017, 2018. And the numbers are really starting to tick up again with that projected increase that we did speak about earlier this evening. And then it's also helpful for the committee really to see how our community is changing and how we are really becoming more diverse in terms of our student population. And one thing that I just wanted to point out is really the commitment to education that the town of South Row has. One of the ways that it manifests itself is really on some of the rankings that we see of our schools. You can see that Algonquin Regional High School is number 14 in Massachusetts High Schools and number one in Worcester, Worcester County, and that is through the U.S. News and World Report. And then three of our schools are also recognized by them, with Woodward being recognized as number five in Massachusetts Elementary Schools, NEARI as number 24, and then Trotier as number 57 in Massachusetts Middle Schools. And while it's nice to have all of those accolades, I think we also need to keep in mind that one of our priorities is to close the achievement gaps. And by looking at our budget, that is one way that we are able to focus on different populations and make that achievable. And when the school committee is putting together their priorities, you're also looking at our mission and our visions. And so many of the priorities that you have approved tonight can be found in those missions and vision, whether it be the educator learning and leadership, empowering learners, equity of opportunity, and then also helping and balance learners and finance and operations. I'm not going to read through each of those because you're familiar with the priorities. So in looking at the FY27 budget, tonight, we are presenting the preliminary budget. It's helpful to see the prior fiscal years, but I will mention that for FY27, the preliminary budget right now is a 6.48% increase. That represents a $1.6 million increase over FY26. And really, in that budget, you will see that there are science curriculum resources as well as device replacement. Many of our devices were purchased during the pandemic, and we are coming up on five to six years post-COVID, so those devices are requiring replacement. So some of the preliminary budget drivers, first would be special education, looking at our tuitions, and then also looking at the transportation that we spoke about earlier. We're also looking at the reduction of grants. You know, you saw tonight the amount of grants that we do receive, and many of those are federal grants. And with the uncertainty of what the federal landscape will look like next year, that's something that we're closely watching. Salaries, we are in the midst of negotiations with our associations, and so that is something that is driving our budgets. Substitutes, we have been tracking our long-term substitutes as well as our daily substitutes and looking at those rates. So that is an increase. And then lastly, curriculum materials. As I mentioned previously, we do have science curriculum materials for the middle school incorporated in the budget. So as we are preparing the budget, we also like to keep in mind what a 1% increase would look like so that we can look at the incremental growth. So for FY27, a 1% increase would be $251,128.
I couldn't figure out what that's like, man. A 1% increase? What increase, 1%?
Well, it's because then we know, yeah.
I understand.
So as I mentioned earlier, the initial budget request that came in from the departments and from the principals was an 11.93% increase over FY26. After that, we apply some preliminary budget offsets. What we typically use are circuit breakers, special education reimbursements. The first line is for tuition. And you can see that in FY26, we are slated to receive $1.1 million, which is down slightly from our FY25 amount of about $196,000. We're also planning to utilize the transportation reimbursement offset of $204,000, which is an increase over FY25 of $110,000. And then I had mentioned at a prior school committee meeting that we also received supplemental money at the beginning of FY26. It was a supplemental budget that was passed to bring reimbursement up to 75% of costs to district. That's something that was outlined in the Student Opportunity Act. So this represents the first time that they have fully funded the 75% for transportation. So our initial offsets are $1,367,273. So once we apply that, you can see that we are at the 6.48% increase or the $1.6 million. Some of the areas where we are seeing the largest increases, first would be in our special education collaborative tuition. Second would be the devices that I spoke about, the classroom instructional technology. And then I think I have a typo there. So the first one at the top is the substitute long-term. And then the second would be substitutes short-term. And then we have instructional materials and textbooks. And the instructional materials and textbooks are related to some of the new curriculum that we are planning to implement next year, as well as some additional resources for our math programs at both the middle and elementary schools. So just to recap, the preliminary FY27 budget is $26,740,512, which is a $1.6 million increase over FY26, or 6.48%. So the budget process after tonight, we will next be meeting with the operational budget subcommittee so that we can really look at the revised preliminary budget. We can gather some more feedback from the operational budget subcommittee so that we can then be prepared in December to present our revised preliminary budget. And I welcome any questions.
Can you go back to the two lines for the substitutes?
Yes.
Explain explain both of them.
Sure. So substitute long-term, anytime that we have someone who is out on a leave for greater than 30 days, we do have to classify those separately according to DESI. So that is something that we had never done previously. And so it was a manual process internally where we were trying to go back and figure out which coverages had to go into fall into that bucket. So I think it was this past year was the first year that we really tracked that separately. We created the proper account number.
Okay.
And so we are looking at, what I did was I looked at the past, I'd say, five years, the average number of FMLA leaves and came up with an estimate for for that account.
And that's the 97?
That's the 97, yes, yeah.
Okay. So we have $20,000 in for
For FY26.
And are we through that money already or?
We are not. It's actually something that I noticed today. We have not utilized any funds yet. However, we do know of some leaves that are going to be happening, so I do anticipate those funds will be.
And are the substitutes that fall into that category, that cover an FMLA, are they, do they receive benefits?
It depends on the amount of time that they are with us. So if they're in a position greater than 60 days, they would be eligible for benefits. But if it's within that 30 to 60, they are not eligible.
So when we fill an FMLA position, are we taking from somebody who is like a building sub and already getting benefits? Or are we like advertising and going outside to get somebody who like specializes in whatever the position is?
The latter, yes. We're advertising. If it is a long-term, we do need to report on licensure, so.
Okay.
So it is.
But it's a combination of, you know, we have a lot of internal staff
Yeah.
do have the qualifications.
Yes.
And we will shift people we know into positions. They will get a higher rate, and then we'll backfill their position. So it's a combination of, but that doesn't always work out.
Yeah, sure. And then the second?
And then this.
So you're going to, because I don't understand why we have the two lines.
Okay, yeah, I'll get that.
And then the second is for short-term. And again, I apologize for the typo, but that would be, so for the daily subs. So you're, we do have building-based subs currently in all four schools where we have somebody who has agreed to come in three days a week and work with us. And we typically have two of those individuals in each of the schools. So that way, we know that we have somebody who's in place already. However, we also have those day-to-day subs that we are still bringing, bringing into the buildings because maybe we haven't been able to hire two building-based subs or the number of absences exceeds the building-based subs that are in there. So that's a combination of the building-based subs at all four schools as well as the daily subs. And that is based on the historical data that we're seeing.
So the correct description is short-term on that one?
Yes, yes, yeah.
So a building-based sub falls under the short-term lineup?
Yes, because they're not filling in for one, one position.
So that's why DESI cares about the distinction, even though to us it kind of seems like they're not really short-term?
Right.
Okay. Okay.
So if you have a building-based sub that's there for four months, because of the type of sub it is, it's still a short-term?
It's still, because they're they're filling in for multiple positions. They're not filling in for one.
But they're probably there for the whole year.
Yeah, I got it. I got it.
Right.
But that's no benefits?
Correct.
Yeah, because it's just.
Correct.
Any, any other questions?
Hang on. Does anyone recall? Just if you recall, so last year, and I know everything's different every year, last year.
Where were we at this time?
Yeah, where were we?
We were.
At this point.
Hang on one second. So we were at, after the offsets, 10.38%. I will caution us that, you know, we, we are still getting better data and better numbers. So, you know, we learned of a student who requires a change of special education placement. So, so we're always navigating and shifting and moving and adapting, but this is the best information we have as of now. But I could share with you, the 6.48% already is no longer 6.48%, based on new information we received.
Okay.
So.
Did it go up or down?
Up. So it's just something.
Yeah.
Or maybe lower.
And we, we, have we received any guidance direction from the town side on kind of what, I hate to say like a goal percentage is, but?
I think that they haven't directly shared with us what the target is, but I did view one of the select board meetings, and the conversation was around 3%. One committee member actually said we should be more aggressive in 2.6%, but they landed on a kind of a, they ended up on a conversation around 3%. No one's communicated that directly.
Okay.
To me, or I'm sure the committee. Getting to a 3% budget is aggressive.
Yeah. And how do, like you mentioned, you're going to have to add two teachers to NEary just based on class size for next year. How does that factor into this?
So this is where the detailed work happens next, working, we have a budget meeting, not tomorrow, next week, next week, with all the directors and principals.
Okay.
And then we will start to look at every line item, every account, and really think about, you know, what that looks like. So it includes making sure we have the right number of positions, looking at more language, looking at all the positions to make sure that when we look at the budget priorities, the school committee has set that the budget that we're bringing forth in December meets as many of those priorities as possible. So the next milestone meeting for us is Monday night, when we're meeting with the Operational Budget Subcommittee for Southborough with you folks.
Yeah.
That will help, we can give more detail.
Okay.
And get more guidance from you.
Anyone have any comments or questions on this? Thank you. Educational policy, approval of Trotier Middle Schools' eighth-grade overnight field trip to Washington, D.C. in November of 2026.
Yes, so Principal Hershock was going to present the overnight trip to Washington, D.C. They just returned, the eighth graders, and from all accounts, it was a very successful trip. And this is seeking approval for the class trip for '26, '27.
And do we have exact dates on this?
No, I think this is, this is just.
Preliminary?
Approval from the committee to, to set dates.
Okay.
You say they just returned?
Saturday.
Saturday.
Oh, okay, so they were not there for Veterans Day?
Yeah, they were, they left. Came back Saturday.
I heard it was awesome. From parents and students. So, thank you to Gary and his team for making it a very positive experience for those kids.
And not easy for the teachers.
I'm sure it's not. Yeah. I mean, I remember going, so. A lot of work for them.
It is.
All right, anyone have any questions or comments? All right, I'll move that the school committee approve of Trotier Middle Schools' eighth-grade overnight field trip to Washington, D.C. for November of 2026. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. And then next is approval of Trotier Middle Schools' sixth-grade overnight field trip to Nature's Classroom in Groton, Mass., October 7th and 8th of 2026.
This is, is this new, or is this the second time?
This is, they.
Several times?
Yeah.
I think I remember when this changed.
We had, we had this from before COVID, and then the gentleman.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this was, I think, the third year. This will be the third year going to Groton.
In a new place.
And they had a successful trip this past fall.
It was north, right? It was.
Stone Environmental.
Stone.
Madison, New Hampshire.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
Do you remember?
Oh, yeah, I remember that one.
So that started in 1980.
Right, it's been a long, it's been around for a long time.
Yeah. I also heard great things about this trip from when it happened, I think they were in September. Any comments or questions on this? All right, I'll move that school committee approve of Trotier's, Trotier Middle Schools' sixth-grade overnight field trip to Nature's Classroom in Groton, October 7th and 8th of 2026.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Personnel.
So in your packet are the personnel actions. So we've had a few hires and I believe three resignations. So it is quieting down, but this is the cadence that we expect to see month to month.
Any comments or questions on this? All right, so we have an, a set of executive session minutes from September 10th. Those will be retained. Did anybody have, if we have any comments on those, we need to bring them back to executive session at future meeting, but does anybody, are we good to approve them to be retained? All right, so I move that we approve the executive session minutes of September 10th, 2025, 2025, but to be retained. Is there a second? All in favor? And then we have this Operational Budget Subcommittee and Capital Planning Subcommittee on September 29th, our regular meeting, nope, sorry, special meeting on October 8th. And, I don't think we have this. Do we have this? Sorry.
On October 8th.
I think the special one on October 8th? I don't think, I don't think those were there, but am I wrong?
I wrote them. I did the minutes.
You did?
Yes.
Oh.
So, so, yeah, so.
Okay.
The tour.
Yes.
Sorry, I thought I was supposed to write them.
You were. You're welcome.
That was the field trip.
The tour.
Yeah. It was the tour. And I was supposed to do them, and I didn't do them, so Greg did them. Let me just look at them. I'm sure they're great.
Yes, hopefully. No guarantees.
I'm good. And then our regular scheduled meeting on October 8th. Any comments or changes on any of those three? I'm going to take them together. All right, so I move that we approve the special meeting for October 29th, 2025, for the Operational Budget Subcommittee and the Capital Planning Subcommittee, the special open meeting minutes of October 8th, 2025, and the open meeting minutes of October 8th, 2025. Is there a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thanks. All right, MTC appointment for next month. We'll kick the Trotier stuff to next month. And then obviously, we'll have budget and capital to discuss. And if anybody has anything else, feel free to let me know. Okay, so now we're going to go into executive to come out of executive. So I'm going to read that. So I move that the Southborough School Committee move into executive session for exemption three to the Open Meeting Lodge, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Southborough Teachers Association, Unit A, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and to reconvene in open session. This is roll call vote, so is there a second? Second. Second, it's by Denise. Denise?
Hi.
Laura?
Hi.
Roger?
Aye.
Chelsea's aye. All right, we are now on executive.
Whenever you're ready.
All right, I'm ready.
Yep, okay, so we are back in session at 9:25 p.m. And we will be ratifying the agreement with the Southborough Teachers Association, Unit A. So I will move that the Southborough School Committee and the Southborough Teachers Association hereby agree to a three-year contract to be in effect as the first day of the 2026-2027 school year, and will continue in effect too, and including the day prior to the start of the 2028 through 2029 school year, except as modified by this memorandum of agreement that terms and conditions of the prior collective bargaining agreement and memorandum of agreement will be carried forward into the successor agreements. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
A question. So what is the term?
So this is the 2026-2027 school year, and go through, including, go, continue through 2028-2029, the day prior to the start of that. Any other comments or questions? All right, all in favor? Laura? Thank you. And I move that we. Oh, public, oh, I, no, I went out, went out. Okay, so we'll close with public comment. All right. And I move that we adjourn at 9:27. Is there a second? All in favor? Thank you. All right, thanks, darling.